This meeting of the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees was previously called to order. The presence of a quorum has been established and the meeting has been duly called and the notice of the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. Thank you everybody for being here as we reconvene from executive session. We'll have action to follow, but not before Ms. Mason gives a prayer and pledge.
Let us stand. If we could ask our gentlemen to relax their hats for just a few moments. Our Father and our God, we thank you this evening for another opportunity that this board, this Board of Trustees, might come together to transact the business of the Tyler Independent School District. We thank you, God, for the children that you have chosen to our keeping. We're thankful for the teachers who educate them day in and day out, for the campus administration who lead and guide the teachers and the vision that is going forth, and the central administration who must come together to plan and transact all that is necessary for our school district. In the midst of all the political turmoil and the trouble that is in our land, Lord, we just thank you for being a good God. You provided for us, you guided us, you protected us, and in the midst of this season of Thanksgiving, we're thankful. We're thankful for you being our God and we're thankful for all who support us in the Tyler Independent School District. Now, Lord, we ask you to guide us in our decisions and may all that we do and may all that we say be pleasing in your sight. And again, what an honor it is, Lord, that you have given us, bestowed upon us, that we might work with the children of this school district and we pray that we will be honorable in all that we do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you for that, Ms. Mason.
Sir.
In the spirit of Thanksgiving, I am thankful for your years of service on the board and
Thank you, sir.
thankful to serve with such an awesome board who goes to work for the good of the kids every day.
Amen.
We do have action to follow in executive session and it has to do with personnel. And number one, Marty, I'll let you take it over here. From here, Director of Payroll and Benefits, Sandra Petrick.
It's my pleasure to put before you an experienced manager of business operations and et cetera, coming to us from Frisco ISD recommending her for Director of Payroll and Benefits, replacing longtime employee Jill Fondren, who will be retiring here at semester.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the administration's recommendation to hire Sandra Petrick as Director of Payroll and Benefits.
Thank you, Dr. Nation. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye, all opposed. Ayes have it, motion carries. Is Ms. Petrick here by chance?
She is. Ms. Petrick, please address the board.
All right, how are you doing?
I'm doing awesome, thank you. I just want to appreciate and tell y'all, thank y'all so much for this opportunity to come here. I'm really looking forward to my new adventure in Tyler ISD.
Well, thank you. We're happy to have you.
Thank you.
All right. And the next position we have is Director of Safety and Security.
Yeah, we appreciate this board allowing us to be patient, to seek the very best and didn't have to look too far. Kind of fell into our lap. We have before you Agent Jeff Millsleagle, who will be retiring FBI here in a few days. He's pretty upset about that, but at the same time of the years of service that he provided our country in many facets, we're excited to bring him on board to be our new Director of Safety and Security because our world has changed and he has been living in that world that's changed for a long time. So Agent Millsleagle is our recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Crawford. Do I have a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion. I move that we approve the recommendation of Mr. Jeffrey Millsleagle as the new Director of Safety and Security.
Thank you, Mr. Burkfield. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, ayes have it. Motion passes. Mr. Millsleagle, there you are, come up and say a few words.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Dr. Crawford, both kind words and board, thank you for the approval. Really looking forward to retiring for the second time and joining TISD first week in December. Look forward to working with you in the future to make this the safest place for our kids, faculty, administration, everybody.
All right. We appreciate you.
You bet.
Such an important position and we're looking forward to having you. Okay, we're moving on to special recognitions.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Crawford. Tonight, we would like to begin our recognitions by announcing our November District Student of the Month. The Elementary Student of the Month is Karimi Alfaro, a fifth grade student at Bonner Elementary School. The Secondary Student of the Month is Aiden De La Santa, a ninth grade student from John Tyler High School. And at this time, would y'all please join me in watching a brief video about these two outstanding students?
Thank you.
Tyler ISD would like to recognize the efforts of our two District Students of the Month. These students are selected based on 12 Tyler ISD learner profile attributes. These qualities lead to successful student outcomes, both in and outside of the classroom. We would like to recognize Karimi Alfaro, a fifth grade student at Bonner Elementary, as our Elementary Student of the Month. Karimi exhibits Tyler ISD's learner profile characteristic of being a team player.
I really like playing as a team because that's how we get to know each other and learn about each other and if one person doesn't know something and the other one does, we help each other and we learn more.
Karimi says her favorite class is math and she explains how the teachers at Bonner Elementary help her to be successful.
The teachers really care about us. They make us feel important and they always tell us to do our best, work hard, and that's what helps us be successful.
Karimi wants to be a veterinarian when she grows up because she loves animals. Our secondary student of the month is Aiden De La Santa, a ninth grade student at John Tyler High School. Of the district's many learner profile characteristics, Aiden is a determined student who wants to succeed. He says attitude is key to student success.
It's just your attitude that probably determines the way you are because mostly a lot of people don't try their best and with their attitude, that really changes the way their perspective is and how they are. So it really, you know, that can really affect you as a person.
Aiden says he enjoys the challenges of biology class. He sees science as part of his future career.
Thinking about becoming a petroleum engineer, which is, you know, something I've been thinking about lately, like researching about, you know, because it seems like a mix of two things that I, you know, enjoy kind of. So like, it really makes me want to pursue it. So yeah, it's going to be a pretty challenging and cool thing to explore.
In Tyler ISD, we're committed to graduating all students with the knowledge, skills, and habits necessary for success in college, careers, and life. Congratulations to these students for their hard work, dedication, and display of the Tyler ISD learner profile attributes. Their efforts are being recognized through TISD TV and sponsorship by Krista's Trinity Mother Frances Health System. Board members, I would like to introduce to you Karimi Alfaro, our Elementary Student of the Month. Would you please come forward? And congratulations to our secondary student of the month, Aiden De La Santa. Aiden, will you please come forward? And tonight, we also celebrate our District Teacher of the Month, Mrs. Amanda Nail, from Robert E. Lee High School. By the way, Mrs. Nail is a new English teacher at Robert E. Lee and has created a welcoming environment for her students. She teaches them with a positive attitude and encourages the students in wonderful ways on how to lead their lives with the same attitude. And finally, Tyler ISD is proud to recognize Moore MST Magnet School PTA for being named the 2019-2020 National PTA School of Excellence. Would our representative from Moore PTA please come forward? Thank you, and that concludes our recognitions for tonight.
Okay, it's always good to celebrate our kids. Those are two memorable ones. We are moving on-
Mr. President, could I say something right quick?
Yes.
I would like to thank Dr. Crawford and TISD and this board for supporting our, my fraternity's annual Achievement Week banquet. We had several TISD administrators that came Saturday night and that is the support of our scholarship program, which 90% of our scholarships go to TISD graduates. So thank you for your support.
We were happy to attend. All right. Okay, we're moving on to our public hearing on 2019 School Acronym FIRST Financial Integrity Rating Systems Report and our district status for 2017 and 2018.
Board, we strive to be an A-rated school system every year and will continue to do that, but there's one thing that we've been able to do over the last 20 years because we were able to provide the 20-year PIN to the individual that's going to be presenting this year's first rating, which equates to an A-rated school finance system. So joining us tonight is the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations. Y'all know her as the CFO, Ms. Tasha Bjork. Tasha?
Good evening, board. I know this is a year old. I will hurry through it because I know how you feel. Okay, there are 15 indicators. Indicators one through five, you must answer yes or you fail. So the first five indicators are if we submitted the audit timely, did we have an unmodified opinion on the audit, were there any internal weaknesses in controls, and were we in compliance with debt agreements, and did we have timely payments to TRS, Texas Workforce Commission, and the IRS? So we got all the first five. The next 10, you get a points 10 per item. And so I will go through those individually. The number six, or the first one of the 10, is was the number of days of cash on hand and current investments in the general fund for the school district sufficient to cover operating expenditures? And the answer is yes, we were 100%. Was the measure of current assets to current liabilities ratio for the school district sufficient to cover short-term debt? Yes, 8.99 times. Was the ratio of long-term liabilities to total assets for the school district sufficient to support long-term solvency? On this one, we have to be less than 60%. We're at 72%. So we got six points. It's a sliding scale. This is the only one we did not get 10. And that's just because we have the new debt that we took on two years ago. Did the school district's general fund revenues equal or exceed its expenditures? And we had more revenue than it spent, so that's yes. Was the debt service coverage ratio sufficient to meet the required debt service? Yes. This is my favorite one. Was the administrative cost ratio less than the threshold? We were at 6.66% for our admin costs and the standard's 8.55. So we're under that wide bid.
Hey, Tasha, hold on. So on 16, 17, so 6, 7, 9 means we were higher?
Yes.
Were we even lower in 17, 18?
There was a reason for that. That was when we had the legal, the DSEG and all that.
Okay.
Yeah. So we went down.
Okay.
Did the school district not have a 15% decline in student to staff ratio over three years? We have like a 3% decrease from three years ago to 17, 18, but we're back up now. And the number 13 was our PMS data that we submitted comparable to the audit and it was. 14, was the audit free of any instances of material noncompliance for grants, contracts, and laws related to local, state, or federal funds? And we had no noncompliance. And then did the district not receive an adjusted repayment schedule? We don't have any financial hardship, so that's yes. So we met 10 of 10 indicators and received 96 points. That's been the same for the past two years. So we had a superior achievement rating. The other requirements are we have to post the superintendent's contract on the website. It's there. And then we have to show your expense reimbursements for each board member and superintendent. And then the superintendent received no additional fees or compensation from an outside entity during that year. And then you all had to answer a survey for me. None of you received gifts over $250 or had any business transactions with any of our vendors, that type of thing, or owner or whatever. And then we're required to report the next three months, so September through November of 18, our expenditures for financial solvency, and that's about what it was the year before. And then just some yes or no questions. Did we draw funds for a short-term note? No. Did we have total fund balance of less than 2% of total expenditures? No. And have we declared financial exigency within the past two years? No. We, I can finally answer, this is one. It's been two, but we can finally say one. And then I've been here for 20 years, so we're good there. And that's it. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? It's good to, how many years in a row is this superior rating?
I think it's 16. I think it's when they started it.
Little bit, yeah.
Yeah, they, from the first year we started it, we've gotten it.
Wow. Well, it's always a good report to hear and thank you for your work.
Tasha, you've been warning me, Ms. Bjork, you've been warning me that these are going to be more difficult to attain over the next few years. Why do you feel that way?
Well, on this, not the next year, but two years from now, because they're looking, they changed the indicators for 1920.
Right.
And there are several that we're going to have to work out to.
Okay.
I think we'll get them. We may just not have 96 points. They're putting a few more in and making it a little tougher.
Okay. Good deal. I think we also have the opportunity for public comments as well on this specific agenda item, if anybody wants to publicly comment. Okay, moving on to our continuous improvement section, we have a Goal One, Early Literacy Update.
Yes, Shawna Hiddle, Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, will be providing the report tonight. We have an early literacy update. Dr. Hanson has her name on there. She is ill and under the weather tonight. Glad to have Ms. Hiddle to provide this efficient report on our initiatives that we have right now with the phonics that y'all have approved. Ms. Hiddle?
Absolutely, thank you. Board, welcome. Thank you for having me tonight. And like Dr. Crawford said, Dr. Hanson is not able to be here, so I'm excited to get to talk to you and share with you a lot of the great things that are happening with early literacy. So Voyager sopris, which is our letters, which as you remember is the science behind phonics and reading. It's the brain part of that. And so we started that this year and we have a cohort of teachers and administrators from our campus instructional leadership teams. We have about 150 participants that are participating in that and have already started that. We've been through units one through four already. We'll go through, or one through one, and then we go to two about, and then we'll finish up with units four by the end of this year. Then we'll, next year, we'll move into the next set of those units. So it is eight units total that the teachers and principals will be going through. Then we'll start a new cohort, starting back with unit one. So we begin, as you see, November 18th to 21st. We're in that this week. We had our first day today with unit two. So some of our campuses were here today, beginning unit two. Once they participate in each unit, the Silt members, which is that campus instructional leadership team, they will take that back to their campuses. They have a presentation that's prepared for them that will bring out the bones of that, of that training that they had all day long. It will take it back to their campuses and will train their cohorts there. So we know since that is just a cohort of teachers, it was important to us to also train every teacher with the art of teaching, reading, and so not so much of the background information, but in the science, but now the best instructional practices. And so we've partnered with the Children's Learning Institute from the University of Texas at Houston, and every third, pre-K through third grade teacher has either gone through or will be going through shortly, these three trainings. So they're on effective classroom instruction, which is focused on all of the components of reading, including phonics and phonemic awareness. Then there is a specific course that they have attended on perfected phonological awareness and then also on the actual phonics. So three different reading instructions that every pre-K through third grade teacher has been through or shortly will be going through. Along with that, from CLI, we have technical visits. And so just earlier this month, they were here, they went to every campus, they did classroom observations, and they met with members of their Silt team at the afternoon to debrief all of the things that they saw happening. And so basically, how well is it being implemented? We're training the teachers now, is it being implemented in the classrooms? So they just finished up those this month. They'll be coming back on December 10th through the 13th to do it again. So things that they saw while they were here, we were excited to see that in every campus that there was implementation there, there, in most of our pre-K through second grade classrooms that were visited. In a little bit, we're going to talk about some of the things we didn't see that we're going to be working on, but every campus had good, strong implementation of the training occurring. Every campus had at least one or two teachers who were using great phonological awareness strategies, which is new to a lot of them. And the students were all familiar with their phonological awareness routines. So that means they didn't just do it the day that they had visitors in the classroom. That means that they were used to those routines. It was evident that the students knew what to expect and that they had been, that had been occurring all year long. So some of the things that we want to address, that we are addressing, that we saw during those visits, is that we need to increase the use of the scaffolding skills. So in other words, use some more of the techniques to help students break down the words, some of the hand motions that they have hanging in with their student. Many times, our great teachers will dignify students when they don't know the answer and will go to another student. So we're talking, so we're talking a lot about how to stay with that student and help them be successful in those sounds, pure sounds. I'm a great example of that, being from West Texas and East Texas. I have a lot of different things going on with my speech. So pure sounds are what we notice in our classrooms as well. That means when we say buh or huh, we add that schwa, uh sound there, that vowel sound there. And where the big, I happen to actually pronounce these words, these sounds for you. So the b versus the buh, so adding in that extra sound. So that's what we refer to when we say pure sounds. That's Dr. Crawford's favorite thing to work on with all of us. So we are working on that because in East Texas, again, like I said, we add that extra schwa sound in there. We draw it out many times.
You gotta get the top lip to touch the bottom lip when you talk.
That's correct.
And we all have a problem with that.
We do have a problem with that. So we don't want to add those extra vowel sounds in a single-sound letter. So the other main thing that we observe, that we are addressing and supporting teachers with, is the difference between phonological awareness and phonics. So as you saw on the other slide, there were a lot of great phonics lessons, which means that's the letter being in front of it, which we want to see. What we were looking for, though, was phonological awareness, which is just the sound. So phonological awareness is something that can be done in the dark. You don't have to see the letter to do that. That's hearing the sounds. So a lot of our teachers were rushing through that piece and getting straight to the phonics because they want to put that letter with it and get to the reading part of that. But it's important that we also spend time on phonological awareness. So those are the things that we saw that we want to address and continue to work on, very common things to see in our early classrooms. So lots of great things going on. We're excited about the learning that's happening in our classrooms.
So board, tonight, you got inputs, kind of, you all remember inputs, outputs, and outcomes. Remember the 2016?
Mm-hmm.
So tonight was kind of inputs. We'll provide a pre-K centric report on some outputs that we have. We have some early circle data that we've proctored to our pre-K classes, the qualifying, the pay and the head start as well. We'll provide that here at the December workshop. But today was kind of our update on the Children's Learning Institute coming in and providing us some coaching and some observations, that third-party stuff. And they were really excited about the energy level of our, pretty much across the board, across the district, right? Shawna?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
It was evident in all of our classrooms and all of our campuses. Like I said, there were just a few things that, mostly it was in good intention because they were just jumping straight to the phonics instead of the phonological awareness, which the next time they come in December, that is what they'll be looking for, is the phonics.
This group was with us when we did our elementary principals retreat back in June. They did training with us back in August with our, with our, with our teaching staff and administrators, Silt teams, and now they're kind of with us doing that. And so they really did emphasize how impressed they were with the high fidelity across the district. And that's, you know, that's when you're striving for equity across the school system, you know, all kids having access to the good stuff, the same stuff, that's something that always concerns us and to get that feedback from a third party and not just us telling y'all, yeah, we feel like there's equity everywhere, that really made us feel good. But there's also equity in the way that we're talking to, with our kids. But there's also equity in the way that we're talking to, with our kids, and we need to really work on that, that enunciation and the phonological language that we're, appropriate language that we need to use on a daily basis, from the top down.
Including all of us. Any other questions?
I don't think so. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you for your update. We are now moving along to the public participation portion of our meeting. And we do have one speaker signed up, and that is Patty McKinney. Are you here, Patty? Yeah, come on up, come on up to the microphone.
Thank you and good evening. Before I start on my topic, I want to publicly commend the bands, the high school bands of Robert E. Lee and John Tyler for superior ratings at UIL Marching Contest. Robert E. Lee has had kind of a history of success. John Tyler struggled for several years, but they are really coming along. And I, I personally watched their routines because it was livestreamed. Both were flawless. You should be very proud. I commend the band directors and, of course, the students, and owe those long-suffering parents.
Thank you.
Usually, when a little old lady appears in one of these meetings, you inwardly cringe because you know there's gonna be a complaint lodged, sometimes loudly. I'm neither little, and I don't think I'm old, and I'm not here to rant about these young whippersnappers today. I'm actually here to sing a few praises, and you'll get the singing reference in just a minute. A few weeks ago, my graduating class, the class of nineteen-sixty-nine, held its fiftieth reunion. That in itself was extraordinarily shocking to us. And another shock came when we realized that our Robert E. Lee would be gone by the end of next summer. On a whim, I reached out to Dr. Crawford at Robert E. Lee to see if we could tour the school, our school, and didn't really expect an answer. Within twenty-four hours, I got an answer that said, "Come on." I told my classmates and that, they were so excited, I, I can't even begin to tell you. Dr. C.'s assistant, Ms. Terry, asked me to give her account. I called her and said seventy. She thought I said seventeen. I, I, I sort of lied to her because I, it really was eighty. And she said, "Okay, and do you want a school official there?" And I said, "Absolutely," because it's a retired high school choir director. I wanted someone else to blame if something hap- if something happened. On the cold, blustery morning of October twenty-sixth, about fifty people turned out. They were, some of them wimped out. And we went to, we met at the Lee Memorial, which is somewhat sacred to my class. Imagine my surprise when the school official was none other than Dr. Crawford himself. I figured it would have, he would have, you know, we would have kind of a lowly assistant principal or a coach who might be trying to get back him some good graces. He immediately made us welcome, insisting that we go to the front of the school and take a group picture. We laughed all the way there, remembering our first group picture. And then, he admitted he didn't know much about our history. He does now. And, but he told us what was currently going on at Robert E. Lee. The first two places we went were the cafeterias. Ladies and gentlemen, it still smells the same. He told us about the curriculum at Lee at the current time and what was going on. We could not believe they were teaching Mandarin Chinese. Most of us nearly died trying to understand the subjunctive tense in Spanish. Then he explained, then we went to the gym and immediately, he let us stay there awhile, and we were immediately covered in memories. I swore I heard some band tunes from the long past. The next two places were the choir room, where Mr. Page proudly displays the words of the alma mater, and then to the band hall, where Dr. Crawford got up on top of a stool. He looked about ninety feet tall and gave us more information about the new band hall and the new school. The band hall was especially important to me because it was built while my dad, Richard Heifel, was band director there. He would be so proud and so excited about the new facility. We were satisfied that the future of secondary education will continue at Lee as well it will, as it will at John Tyler. All in all, the tour was a hit. The class of sixty-nine had a terrific time and felt young for a few minutes. And we're grateful to Dr. C. for going the extra mile for us. What a treasure you have in him. I hope you'll do whatever is necessary to keep him forever or until he retires, whichever comes first. We had such a wonderful time that we want to make a contribution to the school in the name of the Robert E. Lee class of nineteen-sixty-nine. The details will be made known at a later time after which we, after we've completely recovered from that wonderful weekend. We were a special class and believe in the line in our alma mater that says, "The times cannot divide us." Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. That was, that was good to hear, and I'm glad you guys got to tour the school. The new one is going to be awesome. Okay. We're moving on to the approval of minutes. Would I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. And we're moving along to the Business Legal Finance Consent Agenda. Typically, we pull Gifts and Donations, which is item B. Are there any other items that somebody would like to pull? Or can I entertain a motion to approve A through J with the exception of B?
I move that we approve items A through J with the exception of B.
Okay. May I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. And now, we're moving on to Gifts and Donations. What do we have, Dr. Crawford?
Board, every week or every month that I have the opportunity to actually present this pulled item from the consent agenda, it amazes me what our community does for our students. And while we do have ample budget dollars, some of the things we just cannot provide because we do have a large school system that we need to distribute those dollars to in an equitable fashion. But some of the extracurricular activities that get supported by our community is, is, it's just heartwarming. Tonight is one of those nights that I'm very proud to present two equal amounts provided by two different groups for five-thousand-four-hundred-eighty-five dollars for a sixteen-foot enclosed band trailer, the John Tyler Parent Association to the John Tyler Band, and from Atlas Credit for a band trailer, twenty-four-foot enclosed, to the John Tyler Band as well. Appreciate those two community groups and supporting our students, our award-winning band students at John Tyler High School.
Sure is good to see the John Tyler Band getting number ones. And it's also great to see the community surrounding them and, and contributing to that. That is great. May I have a motion to accept this generous donation?
With joy in my heart, I move that we approve the Gifts and Donations.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries. Congratulations, John Tyler Band, for all of your accomplishments. Okay. We are moving on to the Curriculum Instruction Consent Agenda, where we have, have a few different items to cover here. Are we going over all of these, or are we, can we go ahead and approve them all, Dr. Crawford?
It's consent. In here, we do have the targeted improvement plans for Bolter, HOG, and RISE. That's residual from some of the accountability regs that we had in individual domains that we need to turn into TEA. You also have the, this year's membership of the School Health Advisory Council, the Shack, not Shaquille O'Neal, but the Shack. How many, Ms. Barber, how many members did we have in the packet, or on the roster this year for the Shack? About twenty-five plus. So, appreciative of those parents and those students and the community members for representing statutorily required membership on that committee. And we also have the Instructional Materials Committee members for the nineteen-twenty school year, English one, two, four, possible ESL, and I believe health. We, we have materials that are coming up. We'll have a group together to vet those materials, provide recommendations to the administration, and then the administration to the board. Those are the three items.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Crawford. Do I have a motion to approve items A through C?
I move that we approve items A through C of item thirteen.
Thank you, Dr. Nation. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. The ayes have it. Motion's carry.
I do have one question.
Mm-hmm.
Dr. Crawford, usually in the past, principals have been present and presented their plans. Is there a reason we're doing this one differently?
We do have principals present tonight, at least from HOG, the principals here. We've already improved their, the campus improvement plans for those, this is an additional step. So, you've already approved the campus improvement plans for all these campuses that are on here tonight. This is an additional step with TEA because of the indicator rating within one of their domains.
I think what we, she, are we gonna know what they're, within those steps, what they will be doing different? Is there, will they be doing anything different from their already set agenda plan?
Yeah, it was in their packet. It was in your, it was in your board packet.
Okay. Maybe I overlooked it.
Yeah, I think in the past, there's been different variations of improvement plans, and I think what she might-
Correct. When we were improvement required-
Yeah, that's what.
You had to, we had a lot of interest in that, and you had a big, pretty big, thick packet full of eleven of those things. But this is not IR status. This was the indicator within a certain domain.
Right. Okay. I see it. Okay. Okay. Well, we're moving on to Superintendent and Staff, Superintendent and Staff Reports. Bless you. District of Innovation Teacher Certifications Granted.
Yeah. So, part of our District of Innovation Plan that was adopted and approved by the board allows us to provide local certifications to teachers in shortage areas. This year, we provided twenty-four elementary. Those, those folks are working on their elementary certifications, are degreed and are going through the certification process. Sixty-three at secondary that are degreed and provided, either going through the secondary certification process or just working for us on a one-year probationary certificate in perpetu- in perpetuity. Appreciate the community District of Innovation Committee providing this opportunity for us, or we would have that amount of substitute teachers in our classrooms across the district. And this is not just a Tyler thing. Districts that are not DOI in regard to allowing us, their administration to hire, and minis- or, excuse me, degreed professionals to enter classrooms are suffering with their shortages and having to plug those with teachers, I mean, substitute teachers. So, I think this is something that the state of Texas is gonna need to address. Certainly, we'll try the best we can in Tyler. But again, those, those vacancies that we used to have at our, in our campuses where we could not find even a degreed professional to plug in because we weren't allowed to do it, we're now allowed to do that. And have found some pretty rock star folks that just didn't choose teaching as their first profession. I'm alt-certified for my days. I am. Yeah. I found it was a lot, it was a lot more affordable to not do a semester or two of student teaching to go get alt-certified and do my internship through then. So, even a guy can be a superintendent that's alt-certified.
Okay.
That's wonderful. I have a question that I wanna ask.
Yeah.
I see we have several, am I to assume then, Dr. Crawford, that all of these have their degree in history or they have the degree in math or their degree in Spanish, just don't have certification?
Teacher certification, yeah.
Okay.
So, if so, if an engineer-
So, they have a content?
Say that they, let's say it's an engineer, and he's got enough math hours to count for math, we hire him for ma- as a math teacher. That engineer didn't choose teaching as his first, as his or her first profession, but they certainly were able to do that.
I feel better knowing they have a content.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments?
And they do go through PD with us. Ms. Hiddle and her group provide them professional development for those that did not go through a normal teacher certification program in regard to working with them for classroom management, lesson planning, et cetera, whatnot.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving along to discussion, Local Policy FFAC First Reading.
Yeah, this board approved for grades nine through twelve last year for the Narcan. Y'all, that's that opiate blocker or recovery drug. I don't know what you call it. I don't know the technical terms for it. But we've actually gotten sponsorship through Christus, Trinity Mother Frances, Hospitals and Clinics to, for the board to consider through policy, the providing this even at the middle school level. Grades, extending that to grades six through twelve. The policy is before you. We will actually have a second reading at another time for you to actually vote on that policy. It'll be the board, the administration's recommendation for y'all to consider approval for that.
Is there a reason you are considering going back down to the middle school level?
Just being proactive instead of reactive. I'd hate to have a, an issue pop up on us to where we could not do that. It, it would be tragic if we didn't at least bring it to y'all to, for consideration. We've, we've got some challenges in society.
We do.
And we certainly want to be prepared to meet those challenges if they arise at our campuses.
Okay. Any questions or further discussion on that item? All right. Well, we're moving on to future business. We have a December fifth workshop and a December sixteenth regular meeting. We also have Thanksgiving break coming up.
Yeah. Thanks to the board's adoption of the, of the calendar, our staff will have nine consecutive days off, counting the weekends. And I hope that our staff out there, the leadership that's here tonight, can convey that to their staff at their campuses, how fortunate we are to have that. Education is a great profession, and sometimes we take for granted those things. We want to make sure that we work hard all the way up to the final bell on Friday before we take those nine consecutive days off. And then, the three weeks after we get back, we want to make sure we work to the final bell on that Friday. I think it's December the twentieth. Working all the way through that before we get sixteen consecutive days off.
Principal Robert E. Lee is trying his best to contain himself.
And Dr. C., in March, in March-
Pinching himself because it's too good to be true.
In March, you're gonna come back, you're gonna have nine more, nine other consecutive days off. Hey, we, we've got a great profession here. Our outcomes need to match the, the things that our board provides us, and, and we'll work hard and get out. Plus, we have some, we have this year's Beauty and the Beast at Caldwell Arts.
Tale is old, time is-
It's coming. So, there you go.
I will be there. Okay. Well, without further ado, may I have a motion for adjournment?
I move that we adjourn.
Okay. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries. We are adjourned.